We don't have our voting machine operators today, tonight, so it's gonna be back to the voice votes, Colin Rowe, that sort of thing. Steve, Tom, I'll ask Commissioner Oryx to lead us in prayer and pledge. Everyone stand, please.
Thank you for this day, for blessings in our life, Father. Watch over us to see, watch over our family and friends to see, Lord. And the father of everyone's is sick and saving. Matt, Hatmaker, and different ones, Peggy's husband Boyd, and different ones in our life that's sick, Lord. Bless them, Lord. Bless our children, bless our soldiers across the water, your Father. Thank you for this day, thank you for all that you do in our life. But most of all, your Father, I thank you for the plan of salvation to see. Amen.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the row, ma'am, first.
Atkins.
Here.
Ayers.
Here.
Bailey.
Here.
Bayer.
Here.
Bruce.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Evans.
Here.
Hall.
Here.
Hatmaker.
Yes.
Oryx.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Sangley.
Here.
Wilden.
White.
Here.
We've got fourteen members present. We have a form. You have in your package the minutes for the last month's meeting. I will entertain a motion to approve those minutes. Motion approved. Motion by Oryx, seconded by Dan. Any additions or corrections? Call the row.
Atkins.
Yes.
Ayers.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Bayer.
Yes.
Bruce.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Hatmaker.
Yes.
Oryx.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Sangley.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Fourteen yes, one absent. Minutes on through.
Two absent, brother.
And we've got thirteen yes. Two absent. Okay, next is the notary public renewals.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Oryx, seconded by Ruthford. The renewals are Willie Singleton, Deborah Maxell, Sandra J. Eubanks, Stephanie Green Fraley, Carol J. Enson, Casey R. Allen, Naomi Willholt, Janice Ayers, Carrie Mefford, Norma J. Asher, Billy Lynn Bellgoodie. Okay. You all know who I'm talking about. Mark Lee Hoskins, Sharon D. Warren, Michael B. Johnson, Angela K. Wells, Gloria Lee, Diana Gail Walker, Kathy Colburn, Catherine T. Hurst, Melody Miller, Brenda K. Val, Wanda Johnson, and Linda M. Hatfield. Any questions? End of discussion. Ready to vote.
Atkins.
Yes.
Ayers.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Bayer.
Yes.
Bruce.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Nance.
Yes.
Oryx. Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Sangley.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Thirteen yes, two absent. Renewals are approved. Now we have two new applicants.
Motion approved.
Seconded by Alvin Evans. The new applicants are Elaine Jones Morton and Bridget G. Dotson. Any questions? Comments? We're ready to vote. Call the row.
Atkins.
Yes.
Ayers.
Bailey.
Yes.
Bayer.
Yes.
Bruce.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Nance.
Yes.
Oryx.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Sangley.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Thirteen yes, two absent. New applicants are approved. Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve the committee reports and minutes.
Motion approved.
Second. A motion by Oryx, seconded by two Dan's, to approve the committee reports and minutes. Any discussion? Any question?
That's not including the, we're looking for the one for the planning commission minutes. Is that included in this, or what?
It's, uh...
It's in the packet.
It's in the packet along with the budget finance minutes of 311.
It's listed, don't do this, though.
This one, you approve the minutes of the planning commission meeting, there's also an action in there that you need to take care of. I'll take that separate before I vote.
Okay.
If you come to that and you're ready, I can...
Is it the road abandonment? Okay. It won't take you that, or other matters. Okay, we're ready to vote. Call the row, ma'am.
Atkins.
Yes.
Ayers.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Bayer.
Yes.
Bruce.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Nance.
Yes.
Oryx.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Sangley.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Thirteen yes, two absent. Reports and minutes are approved. Next is the budget resolutions.
Motion approved, 31 through 313.
Second. Motion by Oryx, seconded by Sangley. End of discussion. Any questions?
I think they've approved Nancy's budget finance meeting.
Okay, we're ready to vote. Call the row.
Atkins.
Yes.
Ayers.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Bayer.
Yes.
Bruce.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Nance. Conflict in yes. Oryx.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Got a conflict, but yes. We got a conflict.
Sangley.
Conflict in yes.
White.
Yes.
Thirteen yes, two absent. The budget resolutions are approved. Next is the reports from county officials and the departments and other reports to include those that were handed out tonight in this pack.
Motion approved.
Second. Got a motion by Oryx, seconded by Ruthford, to approve the reports. Any question? Any discussion? Ready to vote. Call the row, ma'am.
Atkins.
Yes.
Ayers.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Bayer.
Yes.
Bruce.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Hatmaker.
Yes.
Nance.
Yes.
Oryx.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Sangley.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Thirteen yes, one absent. Reports are approved. Under other matters, we have the sheriff's department surplus property leadership. Twenty-eight. Motion by Atkins, seconded by Oryx. Any discussion? Any question?
I think there's another matter.
There is. We'll have to suspend the rules through there. Ready to vote. Call the row.
Atkins.
Yes.
Ayers.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Bayer.
Yes.
Bruce.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Hatmaker.
Yes.
Nance.
Yes.
Oryx.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Sangley.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Thirteen yes, one no, one absent. Next is the resolution in opposition to redistrict the Eighth Judicial District.
Motion approved.
Nobody has commented to that.
I think we can have a minute or so.
Motion by Oryx, seconded by Atkins. Anybody have any questions? Ready to vote. Call the row.
Atkins.
Yes.
Ayers.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Bayer.
Yes.
Bruce.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Thirteen yes, one no, one absent. Next is the resolution in opposition to redistrict the Eighth Judicial District.
Motion approved.
Nobody has commented to that.
I think we can have a minute or so.
Motion by Oryx, seconded by Atkins. Anybody have any questions? Ready to vote. Call the row.
Atkins.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Bayer.
Yes.
Bruce.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Hatmaker.
Yes.
Nance.
Yes.
Oryx.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Sangley.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Thirteen yes, one absent. Reports and minutes are approved. Next is the budget resolutions.
Motion approved, 31 through 313.
Second. Motion by Oryx, seconded by Sangley. End of discussion. Any questions?
I think they've approved Nancy's budget finance meeting.
Okay, we're ready to vote. Call the row.
Atkins.
Yes.
Ayers.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Bayer.
Yes.
Bruce.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Hatmaker.
Yes.
Nance.
Yes.
Oryx.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Sangley.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Thirteen yes, one absent. Reports are approved. Under other matters, we have the sheriff's department surplus property leadership. Twenty-eight. Motion by Atkins, seconded by Oryx. Any discussion? Any question?
I think there's another matter.
There is. We'll have to suspend the rules through there. Ready to vote. Call the row.
Atkins.
Yes.
Ayers.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Bayer.
Yes.
Bruce.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Hatmaker.
No.
Nance.
Yes.
Oryx.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Sangley.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Thirteen yes, one no, one absent. Next is the resolution in opposition to redistrict the Eighth Judicial District.
Motion approved.
Nobody has commented to that.
I think we can have a minute or so.
Motion by Oryx, seconded by Atkins. Anybody have any questions? Ready to vote. Call the row.
Atkins.
Yes.
Ayers.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Bayer.
Yes.
Bruce.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Hatmaker.
Yes.
Nance.
Yes.
Oryx.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Sangley.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Thirteen yes, two absent. Resolutions approved. Next, we have a resolution to support the rights of people to keep and bear arms. Motion by Atkins, seconded by Ruthford. Any discussion? Any questions?
In this courtroom?
Yeah.
Atkins, seconded by Ruthford. Okay, ready to vote. Call the row.
Atkins.
Yes.
Ayers.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Bayer.
Yes.
Bruce.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Hatmaker.
Yes.
Nance.
Yes.
Oryx.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Sangley.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Thirteen yes, two absent. Resolutions approved. Next, we have a resolution to support the rights of people to keep and bear arms. Motion by Atkins, seconded by Ruthford. Any discussion? Any questions?
In this courtroom?
Yeah.
Atkins, seconded by Ruthford. Okay, ready to vote. Call the row.
Atkins.
Yes.
Ayers.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Bayer.
Yes.
Bruce.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Hatmaker.
Absolutely.
Nance.
Yes.
Oryx.
Yes, ma'am.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Sangley.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Thirteen yes, one absent. Next is the resolution to support proposed legislation for cemetery preservation. I hear a motion to approve. Motion by Bobby White, seconded by...
Wendy Bailey.
Wendy Bailey. J.L. Davis.
There are some points that might not be, might come back.
Did the folks that came last Monday night, did they...
They talked about it some.
There was some questions.
Yeah.
We felt like we might get, if we helped that once, we might be obligated to keep, continue doing it, and we thought it needed to be worded toward, it said help instead of maybe obligations. I would ask...
Would you like to expand on anybody concerning this?
Well, I think, you know, we discussed in the meeting that there are over 600 private cemeteries in Campbell County, and so it certainly, it's not an uncommon thing for people to call and inquire about what can be done because cemeteries are grown up or they want to get access to them. I'm sure they call the county mayor's office frequently, and certainly, all that usual rely on us to get cause of that nature. And this legislation is designed to provide, you know, some solution to those types of problems. Obviously, if the county decides to assume, uh... to care for a cemetery and maintain the right of way going into it, there will be constant problems. I think there was some concern that if you started doing it, for one, that you'd be asked...
Other folks would start, would start demanding in their cemetery and...
And that there was an issue of how, how you would pay for that. But, you know, as far as the resolution itself is concerned, it certainly seems to be something that is for good purpose. You know, we can say that there is no statewide registry of cemeteries, that these are abandoned cemeteries, that are vulnerable to damage or destruction, and if there's little guidance or support for these, and if this resolution is acting, then the East Tennessee Preservation Alliance, which is a coalition of six county counties, has proposed this resolution, and that you're in support of it. I think it just, you know, it just depends on whether or not the commission would want to assume this type of oversight or responsibility if you ask to do so, assuming that the legislature would pass it.
Does it, and then this piece of legislation, does it obligate the county to, unless, unless we decide, unless the county commission decided to take over the upkeep of the cemetery, does this legislation demand that we do that? It does not. So, it's permissive legislation that the, will it be permissive in such that the county commission choose to participate in this new act of animal law, or...
Well, immediately after the resolution itself, you can see the proposed language. It says that counties anywhere within the county boundaries or municipalities, anywhere within the municipal boundaries, are authorized jointly and separately to preserve and protect any abandoned cemetery or any burial ground that the county or municipality determines has been abandoned or is not being maintained by the person who is legally responsible for its upkeep. County or municipality preserving and protecting any abandoned cemetery or burial grounds is authorized, but only with the consent of the county legislative body or other governing bodies, to expend public money for such purposes, to provide for reimbursement of such funds by billing any legally responsible person or letting upon any such person's property as authorized by local ordinance, to exercise the power of eminent domain to acquire any interest in land necessary for that purpose. In other words, you could condemn right of way to go into cemetery, you could condemn the cemetery itself, you could have whatever level of involvement that you wanted to have, from just mowing grass or cleaning weeds up to actually a different property. Again, I think the issue for you to consider here is whether, whether this is something you would want the county to do if you had the authority to do it, and if so, you know, to, you would need to establish some kind of a process procedure for people to kind of, you to consider each particular cemetery, the county would have some interest in it preserved. There are, um, five cemeteries now, there are limitations on the rights of the people who have to access it. There is a statute which provides that if there are existing graves on a piece of property, that when you get ready to transfer that piece of property, you're required to identify that there are, that there are graves there. There's supposed to be an area that would be marked off, you know, if you know where they are, that would, that would say this, this part here of the property is a cemetery. There are statutory procedures that you're required to follow if you want to try to move graves. You know, a lot of times, these graves are not marked, nobody really knows who they are, because they know that they're there. And, so there are some existing statutes to deal with this, and not every day that you see something like this, but it's not totally uncommon either. I mean, we did one just last week in my office where it was a cemetery located on the acreage track, that had never been identified as a cemetery before, and we put this thing in the drawing, because they knew it was, was there. There's really no way to tell what kind of an act would be for this if you enacted it, but if you do, then you probably, and if the legislature approves it, you would probably need to have some kind of a procedure established for people to make an application for the commission to do.
Mr. Chairman? Rusty?
Is this gonna be on the state floor this year, or not?
No.
So, we actually...
They filed it in the House, but they did not in the Senate. And I understand is the person that's going, that was gonna sponsor it in the Senate, wanted to find out if a majority of the county commissions across the state were in favor of it before they moved it forward. Bobby?
If, if you want to study this, I would draw my motion. You know, if you want to study this and, and, or table it for this meeting, that's fine. That's what I had in mind, doing, studying. Okay, I would draw my motion. Well, I'll move it too.
Okay.[1367.12]
out if a majority of the county commissions across the state were in favor of it before they moved it forward. Bobby?
If you want to study this, I would draw my motion. You know, if you want to study this and work table for this meeting, that's fine.
That's what I had in mind, doing a study.
Okay.
I would draw my motion. Well, I'll move it too.
Okay.
Go study further. I don't feel like anybody's ready, just at least we want to jump into it.
Okay.
Second?
We've got, if he withdraws his motion, then...
Motion fails.
There's no...
There's nothing table right off the top of my head.
Well, I have it.
Okay, so the motion is withdrawn. No motion, no action taken, so we'll look at it further.
We have a second.
When do, would you like to withdraw your...
Yes.
Okay, second's been withdrawn, motion's been withdrawn, we'll look at it further. Next is the Open Meetings Act Resolution.
Mayor, I think this has been passed at one time under this commission. We need to go through it again.
David, who sent us this?
Barnwell from Williamson County.
I'm a commissioner from...
Williamson County?
Yeah.
Barnwell.
Barnwell from Williamson County, which is, used to be the chair of the TCCA.
Yeah.
President of TCCA, and there's a lot from this, so...
I spoke to him, want the county commission to be able to anything stricter than what as far as open meetings.
Somebody wants to make a motion? Bobby White?
Second.
Motion.
I'll have Mike your second's motion.
To approve this resolution. Any questions, any discussion?
It just override itself when we did it previous year, right?
Yep.
He's not the first time this guy's brought this before the county commission.
Anybody else have a question? Raise the vote. Call the roll.
Atkins?
Yes.
Ayers?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Bayer?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Hatmaker?
Yes.
Nance?
Yes.
Orrick?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Sangley?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Fourteen yes, one absent. Resolution approved. This resolution, this action that needs to be taken from the planning commission, would that be put on the agenda, or do we need to suspend the rules?
No, I brought that up in the...
Okay.
Basically, what happened, the Mr. Derek Bowman, who's in Hollins tonight, came before the planning commission with the Rushfield Sunbirds, asked that a, used to be a subdivision, I think it's called Oakfield, or something, the subdivision was never finished, and Mr. Bowman has purchased all of the lots and the land at the end of the COVID act, they just wanted to shut that part of the road off, so they went from the third park, and then all that. Planning commission approved of that, to recommend to the county commission to allow the closure of that portion of the road. I talked to Mr. Potter about it, and Mr. Potter said he had no problem with that, that you close that portion of the road, under the stipulation, in your motion, if you would put, that they would provide ample place for the bus to turn around, if everyone drove back there. So he thought he had no problem, so, planning commission recommends, and Mr. Potter approved of the closure of that portion of the road. I sent y'all an email, and had the map in it, and I hope that all of you got it. It's his property, the ones I've got here, black and white, and I sent out the color one, and it's his property, it's one with the light blue lining all around it. So it is approved by planning commission, and by Mr. Potter, and they asked that you approve that.
So this is the abandonment of Swett...
The portion.
Dogwood Hill subdivision.
I'll make that motion.
Second. That providing that ample room is left for school buses to turn.
Correct.
Motion by David, seconded by David. By David Atkins. Any questions, any discussion? Raise the vote. Call the roll.
Atkins?
Yes.
Ayers?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Bayer?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Hatmaker?
Yes.
Nance?
Yes.
Orrick?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Sangley?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Fourteen yes, one absent. And this next resolution, is this something that Bob Walden?
Bob Walden? Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve that.
This is a resolution requesting revision of Tennessee Covenant 12-4-106. That's due with performance of competitive solicitation and procurement of all professional services.
Yeah.
Second.
I'll second.
Better with all.
Can I break it down for the mayor?
I can, William.
Do you want?
I can.
Go ahead.
It simply states that, like the deal we got into with the solar panels, even though there was the Tennessee code, it says, because of it being professional services, we're forbidden from bidding that out. But it said that we could take quotes. It went a step further and said that, for the school system of us, we can accept quotes for engaging phone conversations with individuals of different businesses to... We weren't limited, this doesn't limit us to just saying, we don't have to bid on it because it's professional services.
It's to return, return that law, reverse that law that says, that if it's energy-saving, is that right?
Well, it's the Tennessee code, we can't, we can't...
I know, but we're asking them to reverse that, the wordage in that law, is that what it's saying?
I think it's just...
We can't reverse the law, it takes them to reverse it, so that's what it's saying.
It's just, instead of saying or assuming that we don't have to bid on it, we're going to say, even though we don't have to bid on it, we're going to engage in quotes and accept some quotes. We're just saying we're going to follow the law to the letter.
Joe? This resolution is not asking, is this resolution asking the legislature to... Demand that we change the law to require competitive bids for all professional services? No. It's just asking the legislature to revise the statute to authorize counties or local governments to do that if they so desire. That's correct. Does everybody understand?
Just request a minute, please.
Mr. Chairman, I passed out at the workshop meeting, copies of the Tennessee Code Amending Section 12, 4106, and they had colored parts, there were basically three parts to it, where each separate section dealt with procedure for professional services. This resolution would be acting as a general assembly to pass legislation which would allow competitive solicitation of professional services, should the commission wish to do so. For those projects that you would have the ability to do so, it wouldn't change the fact that the Department of Education still does their own thing, the commission does your own thing. Say, for instance, professional services, engineering services on water lines, industrial property, railroad sightings, we don't, now we don't, we don't take bids on those things. We normally just use the people that we had success with in the past. So if this law was changed, and it authorized us to take competitive bids, then would the commission have to say, for engineering services, for water lines, we're going to take, we're going to have to pass that motion to say that that's what we're going to do? Or... Well, it would depend on how the statute was worded, I know they extended to the legislative draft commission, you know, to come up with the wording, but this, what this would allow would be a permissive action on the part of the commission, if you chose to do so, there would have to be, I guess, procedures established, which would determine whether, in a category that you want to do this, or if you don't. It would ban that, but it would say that you could if you wanted to.
We don't have that right right now, if we want to?
Not if it's professional services.
The process is limited in how you do it, it's not so much that you can, it's how you do it. For example, in the area of architects and engineers, the statute says that you would first determine who you felt was able to do the work, and then you would choose from those people, a company that you would then negotiate with, see if you can arrive at some kind of a mutually agreeable contract to provide those services. But it's not where you do it on competitive bids, where you then go and get five others to say, well, this is what we'll do, we'll do it for.
Okay, my question is, so what if we want to let it out to the five, and let them bid on it, do we have the authority to do that?
Under present law, this type of legislation would possibly allow for that.
Yes. We went through the jail process, Joe, we went through about five different ones, you was involved, didn't bother me, and we sat down, we didn't just pick somebody, we sat down and went through and spoke to each individual, gave them time, coming in, and told us what they were working to do. Now, that was what we did under the law. The other way around, we'd be throwing it out, saying, we need a professional service, we want to bid, so you give a bunch of paper, right?
There's not always been one in the lowest bid.
That's right. So that's why I would say I would wish a professional win out, in case somebody draws it up, you get stuff with a bunch of change on it.
Tennessee Covenant, Section 12, 4106, is a section to the bidding process, that the county has required, required to do. And it basically says that professional services are exempted in most instances from competitive bidding requirements. David Atkins?
Joe, do you have an opinion, as a wide-related body, would think that it would be necessary to leave this portion out of the competitive bidding process?
Which legislative body?
The state legislature?
Yes, yes. Well, I think that probably, it would have been their general consensus, that whenever you're seeking these types of professional services, that if you're not best served always by taking the lowest bid, it doesn't, the present process doesn't require you to enter into a contract with the first person that you select. You can bargain with that company, and get a price from them, and then you decide, do we want to do business with them or not? And if you don't, then you go to the next, you know, you can just keep going on down the line. I think there are certain types of services that they probably thought that you would be better off to choose the person in that bid, as opposed to a regular type of bid then. The best example, you know, that we always talk about, is would you really want to ride in a plane that you thought had been designed and built by the lowest bidder? Probably not. And that same rationale can apply to buildings, and other things that involve surveys, engineers, architects, things that can collapse, crack, subside, you know, that there may be a certain level of confidence that you want to have in the company that does that work, and not just base it on the lowest bid. The present statute says that you're not, that while you can, you can consider cost or price, that you're not supposed to base your selection on the basis of cost or price. It's one of the factors that you can consider.
Mr. Chairman? And I agree with Joe, I think it's a lot like the cemetery resolution we were looking at, it started off as a good thing, and then through the years, there's loopholes in this, and looking at a track record, I go back to Dr. Martin and Ms. Bundren, you know, the money that they funneled into this professional services that belonged to her sister, you know, that's where he can get off the track. The bid process is not limited in us to the lowest bid, we've always got a right to refuse that lowest bid, we can go with the next lowest bid, or the next lowest bid, whoever we feel like. It's just kind of, I think, maybe fixes what's been array for the last few years, gives us another opportunity, or another, another way of looking at bidding some of this stuff out. It's still just been limited because of the Tennessee code.
Anybody else have a question? Raise your vote. Call the roll, may I, please?
Atkins?
No.
Ayers?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Bayer?
Yes.
Cruz?
No.
Davis?
No.
Evans?
No.
Paul?
Yes.
Hatmaker?
Yes.
Nance?
Yes.
Orrick?
No.
Rutherford?
No.
Sangley?
No.
White?
No.
We have six yes, eight no, and one absent. Resolution failed. We will meet a motion to suspend the rules to declare K-9 Bronco of the...
Motion to suspend rules, man.
Second.
So this is a dog. K-9 named Bronco. Okay, I was trying to get that, I kind of thought we had another vehicle, that you called a K-9. My mistake. We're claiming that Bronco is surplus to Campbell Cash Sheriff Park.
A dog's surplus.
We got a surplus dog, everybody understand that?
Are you implying? No.
He is going to go with his handler, that he has now, to pull us to the 21st park. They're hiring from us, and the dogs are guaranteed to handle whatever happens.
And you're getting from Clinton $99, $100 for this K-9? Everybody understand that?
It's a good deal.
Since I got three pets for saying...
This dog will pay, this K-9 will pay up to $100.
Right, right, okay. Everybody understand?
I made a motion to suspend the rules, you got to vote on that.
Okay. And Sangley?
Second.
The motion is to suspend the rules. Call the roll, may I, please?
Atkins?
Yes.
Ayers?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Bayer?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Hatmaker?
Yes.
Nance?
Yes.
Orrick?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Sangley?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Fourteen yes, one absent, the rules are suspended.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Sangley, triggered by Orrick, to approve the declaring Bronco surplus.
This money will be appropriated back into the drug program, or can you...
Yes. Any questions? Ready to vote on Bronco?
Atkins?
Yes.
Ayers?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Bayer?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Hatmaker?
Yes.
Nance?
Yes.
Orrick?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Sangley?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Fourteen yes, one absent, the rules are suspended, now we need a motion to declare the 2003 Ford E450 of the ambulance service as surplus property.
Second.
I know there could be a first step before I get to this thing. I'm just trying to get through the night.
Okay, it's a, okay, that's good. Motion is, and second is to suspend the rule. Call the roll.
Atkins?
Yes.
Ayers?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Bayer?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Hatmaker?
Yes.
Nance?
Yes.
Orrick?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Sangley?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Fourteen yes, one absent, the vehicle is declared surplus. And one more thing that I have, just a piece of information, we received notification from the Clean Tennessee Energy Grant, that one of our applications was not approved. We had to proceed into, so I, and I don't know, we just kept this on, but we did, but I will find out once you...
Yes.
Sangley?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Fourteen yes, one absent. Rules are suspended. Now we need a motion to declare the, uh, two thousand three four E four fifty.
Second.
Take a surplus to the NMS.
Who made the motion?
I did.
Second right here.
Seconded by Wendy Layton. Any questions and discussion?
Is this going on one of the two ambulances, one of the new trucks?
This will be the third one that'll be going for a rebound and they're coming to get them this week so we can get all three of them tracked and traded. So we'll have three thousand thirteen's coming in. Anticipated date, the first one should be here somewhere around May the seventh, the second would be June the seventh, the third one, uh, July the seventh.
So you bought three new trucks?
Yes.
I thought we only talked about two new trucks.
We did. Um, this, this third one is coming through. If you remember, um, we had a repayment back from working top of forty-two thousand five hundred dollars. And, uh, if, if you know, sometime back at the beginning of the fiscal year, uh, by Devon Director Tony Ayers, he had to retire for medical reasons. He asked me to hold his salary and not to replace his position. So we go for a rebounding truck and give here at the end of the year. And so we're taking his salary, a little bit more. You know, a little bit more, but within where we save the personnel and then the money that we got, that was a payback for what we're talking about.
Any other questions? Ready to vote?
Atkins?
We already suspended the rule. Yes, okay, we're voting on declaring the third one.
Yes.
Okay.
Ayers?
Yes.
Baird?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Hatmaker?
Yes.
Nance?
Yes.
Orick?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Sangley?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Fourteen yes, one absent. The vehicle is declared surplus. And one more thing that I have, just a piece of information, uh, we received notification from the Clean, Tennessee Energy Grant that one of our applications was not approved. We had to pursue into, so I, and I don't know if we just kept this on, but we did. But I will find out once you know. John and Bruce.
Well, you got the recreational meeting on there and I guess anything that you all, any action that you all took at the meeting would be on the agenda, is that correct, Joe? I would think a lot of this, bringing them over to the... Okay. Mr. Chairman, the Recreation Committee met this afternoon and they approved the selling of advertising signs at the White Bridge Mall Park. And that money, and I'll give a lead up there, that money was to go to, uh, help offset the hourly wages or the wages. It was twenty-three hundred, yes, twenty-three hundred that that was to go to offset the wages and stuff for attendance up there, put them on forty hours a week. And, uh, the remainder of the money was to go into maintenance to, uh, to buy sand or seed. Uh, I'll make that motion.
Second. Joe, you're...
What are you hearing when you're talking about selling this time?
They are...
Advertising signs?
Advertise four by four signs, like you advertise on the, place on the fence, on the outfield.
On an annual basis.
Yes.
You know, like Joe Coker, attorney general.
They sell these signs for a hundred and fifty dollars.
For two hundred and fifty dollars, they'll let you have one for a hundred and fifty.
They want to appropriate portion of that money for the extra wages that are gonna be paid to the end of the year and then the rest of the money will be used to buy supplies for the upkeep of the baseball field.
Go back to the maintenance.
We could do that sanitation, any of them guys still work it?
Yeah.
Put them on garbage cans.
We got a motion right here.
On second. Motion, Alvin second.
Alvin second, okay. Any other discussion? No, he already had the recreation. Everybody good with it?
Just one quick thing, sorry. John, if somebody will call Rogers Group, they'll probably donate that sand. Cause it's not that far from them.
Okay.
I appreciate that.
Everybody ready to vote? Al Gore, may I have a call?
Atkins?
Second.
Ayers?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Baird?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Hall?
No.
Hatmaker?
Yes.
Nance?
Yes.
Orick?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Sangley?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Thirteen yes, one no, one absent. Okay, now you need to get the hours approved.
I make a motion that...
Paying them, paying their, paying them for forty hours, increasing their hours to forty hours per week, year.
They, they agreed to, to work forty hours, forty-eight to be paid for the...
Can they do that, Chuck? Can't do that, can you?
Don't even say that. You're making a motion to pay them for forty hours a week.
Yeah.
Same reason.
It's not legal, is it?
If you appropriate the money to pay them forty hours a week, it is, isn't it?
They volunteer.
You have to say you're paying them a salary.
Have to pay a salary.
Forty hours, but you pay them forty hours.
Let them work forty-eight, not pay them forty-eight.
No, you can't, you can't let them work longer than that and only pay them forty.
Thank you.
Well, the end of the table, see on that, I've seen this work. They can go ahead and, now the goodness of their hard work, forty-eight hours, you can go out there and pay them forty and they'll be good guys. Play them long, sometimes have them, let that run on calendar, you will go back and pay them overtime and all that kind of thing. Sure. Listen to the ambulance service.
I think you asked to have the minutes pulled.
I believe they're, originally were set up as salary to begin with. When we, when we done that, we set them up...
Many years ago, I was working for somebody and we did, he did that. Some week you work less than forty, but all hours you work over forty, he had to back up and pay.
Right. So if their salary, their salary.
It's better.
We've been under that goal. We ran into that, thank you, sir. We paid it, we backed them.
So we're gonna increase them to forty hours a week. That's how they're gonna work.
And they need to understand they can't work forty-eight.
Yes. Alvin, you still set that motion?
Yes, I did.
Are they gonna be listed as being paid by the hour or salary?
That's not gonna be, that's not gonna be our decision on that. That's gonna be the term about hours, the term less than thirty-five, ten, four, or nine. In a certain, certain positions, you can place a salary, but there's others that's not in an exempt status, so I may, it's gonna be hourly wages. That one, Jerry, can find that designation for you real quick. But you're just approving them to work forty hours a week. Right. That's what, that's what this motion does.
Yeah, I do too.
Let me ask David one thing about that. One, I'm a supervisor, which can be a salary position.
Forty, you say forty hours salary, that also makes it they work twenty hours only in forty hours.
That's right. Well, he's gonna get the salary for forty.
Say salary.
They get the forty hours salary, you can put on the, on the...
See, I think they're not that, now you can hear the difference in those two employees. One's a supervisor, isn't he?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that is one of the definitions, they have to be supervised and then the...
That's right.
Rusty?
And I wasn't, I sat in here on that committee meeting, but it's until our fiscal year ends, it's not for now on, so...
Hey, that's something that from the budget, that's what we'll be discussing during budget time.
I mean, they understood, I believe, that it was up to that point in time, not to think that it's gonna go past that budget, cause... Am I right, Marine?
Rusty, there again, like Tom said, I think working, we have some issues, we'll be pulling some minutes to find out exactly, you have to set up hourly or based on salary.
And we may have to come, we may have to come back next month and approve some sort of button, but, but fairly start, we probably have to do that. But this motion is to approve them to, to work forty hours per week. Everybody understand that? Al Gore?
Atkins?
Yes.
Ayers?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Baird?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Hall?
No.
Hatmaker?
No.
Nance?
No.
Orick?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Sangley?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Eleven yes, three no, and one absent. Alvin Evans, you had just called for the environmental?
Yes, it's already over with.
Okay, you have nothing else?
No, sure.
Uh, Baird?
You know, Boomer, you're right. If anybody read Boomer's column, it says, "Words can be powerful things. The wrong words can get you in trouble." And this is just for the record. Dale Cantrell, the school board attorney, stated at the last meeting that, that the information included in the proposal that I proposed, including the invoices, meter readings, accounts, or public records, open to anyone who requests information. With that being said, I withdraw my proposal.
Okay. Uh, Hatmaker?
Yeah, we called another environmental meeting for April eighth. I think that's April eighth, five o'clock, no, four-thirty, four-thirty. It's environmental meeting for April eighth, it's four-thirty. Did the individual from Trail Manager show up?
No.
Can you ask him to bring those financials?
Where you want.
I'd like to see his receivables for the last six months.
Oh, ask him.
Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, one more thing, yeah. Joe, or Bobby wants the convicted felon resolution to go through...
I'm gonna set up a meeting.
Right, so that won't...
That will be, what will be on the agenda.
Yeah, can we get that done for next month?
Uh, we can do it April.
Okay.
Uh, one other meeting is on April...
We have budget and finance, it's workshop.
And then you have a, you set up...
Four-thirty.
Four-thirty?
Yeah.
Five o'clock is, uh, budget and finance.
Budget and finance.
Six o'clock is workshop.
Can we have it correctly after that?
Good.
End of the timeline. An evil journey. Meeting, breakfast, come.
About before the beer board meeting.
Beer board meeting.
Can we have any applications?
Usually at five-thirty, then five o'clock, uh, insurance...
Recreations at five o'clock. Recreations at five o'clock.
It's at five-thirty.
Five-thirty.
What committee's here in average time?
Well, there might be, but point now.
Bobby?
What kind of committee did you say that was gonna be? Personnel?
Personnel and insurance.
Personnel is, uh, J L Davis, Nance, President Orick, Steve Rutherford, and me. So you're on personnel. Sue, with that being two places.
Yeah, if there's a... See, they've got time to turn application in for.
You can have it, you can follow that, that's what, ten, fifteen minutes?
Usually, yeah. It's usually not very long. It's, we have a complicated...
Somebody's been...
You get tutored, you...
We're setting, we're gonna set it for five-thirty if there's no beer board, then if there's a beer board, we'll do it right after that.
Or we can put it after the next week or whatever. I mean, you know, if, if there's no time for it, like. And a lot of times, among the information meeting that, it's kind of, a lot of times it's getting very lengthy, you know? So, but, we'll, we'll just go ahead and set it for five-thirty and if, uh, if there is a beer board, maybe we'll, we'll notify everybody that we've changed.
Okay. The Perry property?
Yes.
Uh, David Longmire, they turned it over to David Longmire. Uh, it's, there's seventy-four, forty-eight acres. It's over there across the road, just what they're selling. Uh, sale price is a million, hundred and seventeen thousand, two hundred dollars, plus some payment. Uh, and they also said if you spread it over five years, five annual payments of two hundred fifty thousand dollars.
I think so, man.
I had talked to Carville and some of the folks at Jack's Bar to see if they would be interested in going in with the county and buying that piece of property, cause it's, once it's gone...
It's gone.
That's it. There's, uh, we do a lot of things with that piece of property. You have a sports complex, a business center, retail center, parks, just a whole host of things that you can do with that, connect it to the park, wait doors to the park property right there by the creek.
Why do you mind somebody that was coming?
And if, for that matter, you know, if we got it and held out to it, if we didn't, if we did do anything to it, with it.
It's not going to depreciate.
Uh, not that piece of property.
Nope.
Would the state allow us to, oh, take that fence down? Do that model?
You apply for a...
No.
A right of way, probably. No.
You might get them to allow you to widen the road into it.
At present, no.
Yeah. You can get them to let you to widen it, but no, they're not gonna let you.
You better hold up on this way through the election, those Dog Creek people, string you that.
Well, we're not gonna do something that, it's not gonna be industrial property, it's gonna be something that would, would benefit them as well.
You could have a complex in there, might have a swimming pool, kids could go to.
Does anybody have any proposals on a way to pay more?
I just throwing it out there. I was kidding when I said we could cover it up.
We could probably build a rec center, name it Johnny Bruce, ain't pay half of it.
I mean, it'd be a good place for a boys' and girls' club, there's just all kinds of uses for it.
I think, I think it's, it's an outstanding piece of property, but we gotta consider ways to pay for it, I only know of one. Actually, I know of two.
No question.
I'm not gonna mention me. No, we can sell those signs like at the ball field, every one of them. No, uh, one thing that we might wanna consider, if you're seriously looking at this, and once again, this is kinda going back on last month and, and some of the things that we talked about, but if those solar panels actually are a viable revenue source, that might produce enough money to stroke the payment on this property. They're gonna sell this property April the fourteenth. They're gonna let do.
Could we get them into, like, is it four or eight? I don't know. They'll break it down into tracks?
It's gonna be fairly large.
Eight acre tracks, so they went through the infrastructure.
They're not willing to buy them to get to this area.
They're not willing to swim into there.
There'll be a rock if there's...
Solid rock.
If there's some proposal that we want to propose tonight, we can come back, you know, in the next week or so, if we have a special call meeting if we want to.
Yeah, I will. I'll propose we don't even touch it.
Could we approach them about holding off till we can get those first ready?
Well, you can, but I'm... America, we asked the finance department to, can look at the number, like, to, to debt service, what'd you say, one point one million dollars? One point, yeah, a million, hundred seventeen thousand, two hundred dollars. We'll make a motion to do that. That's just to look at, you're not...
Yeah, it's, it won't hurt to have them look at it.
Yeah, maybe, let me think about this.
I'll say...
If you make a motion, he'll be, he'll be serious about it.
Come on, Bruce.
Second.
I'll make that motion. Uh, we'll first, I will.
Make a motion that we request finance to give some, a proposed, uh, method, financing Motion that we request finance to give us a, a proposed method of financing this piece of property, is that what you want?
Yes, sir.
Well, you've got to say it again. You suck yourself out of it.
I'm thinking, man, the little Johnny Bruce sports complex, hey, go.
I know, what's it priced at?
Mine's less than two thousand acres.
Uh, it's fifteen, uh, no, it's fifteen thousand dollars a acre. That's what.
It's crazy.
I doubt it's a bad man, wasn't it?
Well, uh, the land value, according to the property assessor's office, which includes, includes the property, that's on the other side of the highway as well, it's a hundred and... Eighty-three and a half acres, calculate acres is nine hundred and fifty-one thousand, six hundred dollars.
Nine hundred and fifty-one thousand.
That's what's pretty tight?
Yes.
That's the market value.
Going back, and you said that they were going to do five years, I'll say that again, that deal.
Spread over five years. Five annual payments of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Well, they're going to have, that's just like a hundred eighty thousand dollar interest.
A million, two hundred and fifty, a million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Do you know whose appraisal that was, William?
This just came from Mr. Coker. It's the, uh, State, State Real Estate Assessment Data.
That's what you get when you go to the property assessment.
Are we collecting taxes on that?
Total use, total use appraisal is seventy-five thousand, four hundred dollars.
Will they take that course?
Tomorrow.
It's always good to keep your options. See what they come up with.
Is that about a nine, that one? Maybe it's one and a half, seven feet?
Is it an absolute option? I know this is, but I need to...
I, I don't know whether it is or not.
I doubt it.
Absolute option, I don't know. Okay, we've got a motion and a second to send to finance, a request to come up with some funding options for this seventy-four, the high acres of the Hugh Perry...
Okay, if Kelly and Burke are buying this, supply load or something like that, I don't know what it's going to be. We're going to build a courthouse over there, or we're going to build a swimming pool over there. Or another jail, or whatever. This is, this is a big chunk. This is a big chunk. Okay, one way in, one way out. It doesn't make highway. And it's going to remain that way.
Actually, two.
No, that ain't made highway.
You can't...
The main highway is the one.
The public wouldn't go in on better than that.
Quarter mile by a piece of acre, back to the [inaudible 0:43:57]. Okay, what do we want to do? We can't sell it. I mean, there's no way we can sell it. I mean, we, we can't get into land business.
They're asking, we need to take the perspective of how much it brings in when they build houses on it, how much revenues can actually turn over with property tax compared, we're sitting on it, like we have property in the past, you know? We've got to look at all that perspective, can't just look at, well, this is property that we can possibly bring in industrial with, because we've got the one forty-one, or Carable does, that's still set up on the hill, with all the infrastructure in it.
On the interstate.
I mean, really, I just, I just want to know. What we were going to do.
Basically, again, just look at it, see if we've got the funding, if we can come up with that, and then all this other detail come in, but April the fourteenth?
It ain't going to happen.
I don't think that you're going to know.
It ain't going to happen.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to request some information from finance to see if we can fund this piece of property. Alvin.
Atkins?
Ayers?
Ayers? Bailey?
Yes.
Bayer?
No.
Bruce? Davis?
No.
Evans?
No.
Paul?
No.
Hatmaker?
Yes.
Nance?
No.
Oric?
No.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Sangley?
No.
White?
Four yes. Four yes, ten no, one absent.
You asked Dr. Commissary?
They've already told you.
They've done that, you, does anybody else want to know about the commissary? Well, give a brief, little short, oh, synopsis of what happened at the commissary.
Come on up front, come on up front. Okay. Does anybody have any questions, Ray?
Thank you, by the way.
Does anybody have any questions, Ray?
Thank you, by the way.
Uh, Bob Walton had something else on there. Anybody have any, now, Bobby, we've already done what you asked for. We failed to do anything, and...
Okay, I'll tell you something, but...
Okay, go ahead, now, go ahead and tell us what you're going to do.
Carter, Colin Carter Allen, but it's actually Ted Carter.
Yeah.
Ted Carter met with some of the officials down in Nashville. They're going to start blow a little dam on that access point in about two weeks. Hein Holler, which is Mattie Randolph Holler, they're going to work on that parking area this summer. He's supposed to got back with me with an email of what else they're intending to do, and I haven't received it yet, I'll give him a call sometime tomorrow. That's two little bugs that helped us a little bit, hopefully. May I open up this? No. Not yet, I mean, I've not had a chance. He'll know it by the...
Courthouse will be closed next Friday and next Saturday, the twenty-ninth and thirtieth of March.
Ladies and gentlemen, second.
Don't be straight, Sam.